Business meeting in Waynesboro City Council. And just to remind citizens that if you'd like to comment during the public hearing, you may call into the number that's been provided on the city website. And I'll go ahead and share that as well. It's a toll free eight four four. Eight four four. Nine two zero zero again, eight four four, eight four four, nine two zero zero. And then when prompted, you'll enter the access code for the meeting. Which is three nine eight. One four five. And then you hit the pound button. Again, that's three nine eight one four five and you hit the pound button. And then you'll hear that a Q and A session has started and you'll press the star six button. So. So please feel free to sign up and and get into the queue for those comments if you'd like to participate and. And now any of the hearings or in the public comment period later on in the meeting. And just, you know, there's a reminder, the public hearings are an opportunity for. For citizens to comment on items or bring concerns to the attention of city council and not intended for Q and A period. So with that, move to item number two. Which is the adoption of the meeting agenda. And I understand the city manager is. Lots of conversations with Mike, I think over the last few weeks and withdrawing recommendations for certain. Utility fees increases and as such. The scheduled public hearing on those recommended items increases is not necessary, which is item six on your agenda. That said, the council must still confirm. The rates for fiscal year twenty twenty one by resolution. Is there a motion to amend the agenda to reflect that change? A no public here but consideration. What I think we we were having some difficulty with the the flag range, city manager. Yeah. So with that, is there a motion to amend the agenda to reflect that change? No public hearing, but consideration of the resolution setting the various utility rates? You is there a second? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. I just saw that 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 should have been item number seven. Is that close enough for? I saw the chat after I was looking down and reading Mike, so apologize. Item number three is the consent agenda, which is consideration of the consent agendas or motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Bruce. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And motion, thank you. Number four matters from members of council. Anything that anyone have that they'd like to share this evening?
I'd like to say something. I just want to thank staff and all of our employees. They've really worked hard during this pandemic and virus. And they're keeping the city running and I appreciate all your hard work and and your diligence in keeping it the wheels on the bus as we go through this.
I'd like to say ditto.
Thank you. I think it's great to see too, just, you know, the activity of, you know, important work in the city, even sidewalk replacements set in front of the Gorsuch building. It's been great to see. The professionalism and diligence of of our staff and so appreciative to their work. So I would echo that. And I would also just as a reminder, we had a meeting with our electoral board earlier in the week and just wanted to remind citizens take another advantage. To remind folks that the polling locations for the council and school board elections on May nineteenth have been. Moved to one polling location and that's a middle school in the upper lot cafeteria. Anything else? We'll go to item number five, which is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing the annual appropriation ordinance. For the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Mr. Ham.
Mayor Shorten, members of council, good evening. Our plan is for me to provide some introductory remarks and have Mr. Shaw then walk us through. A more detailed presentation of revisions that we're proposing for the fiscal twenty twenty one operating budget. You know, in March, the staff presented a recommended budget that I would regard or describe as solid of good quality in that it pursued. The stated objectives of council without disturbing significantly valued affordability of life in Waynesboro. That budget, however, was based on revenue forecasts that were developed. Before the advent or arrival of the coronavirus in the Commonwealth. For the issuance of the two governor's executive orders and the resulting economic impact described by some as revenue shock for local governments. Relying on several econometric models developed specifically for municipal governments, the staff is forecasting. A four point two million dollar loss of local revenue in the ensuing fiscal year twenty twenty one. Economic impacts from coronavirus may be more severe even than those we experienced locally during the Great Recession, which began in two thousand and eight. The magnitude and rapid onset of the damage to the economy have required swift and dramatic response. I'm reminded of a quote about Coach Wooden, the legendary coach of the UCLA Bruins, who always said, be quick, but don't hurry. Indicating that sometimes. Swift action is required, but enact swiftly, take care, not to hack act haphazardly. And I take. The swift work that executive staff, the budget team and. Our department directors have developed. Reflects swift but quality work. A budget that took more than four months to originally construct has been revised by the stated more than four million dollars in about a month. Unfortunately, the priorities reflected in the original recommended budget, employee compensation, school funding, capital improvement investment and maintaining levels of service. Have all been deferred or subordinated to the objectives of maintaining essential municipal services and adopting a balanced budget as localities are required to do. By the Code of Virginia. Though balanced and sufficient to support essential services, the budget and resulting program of service is not gratifying. Progress on important initiative initiatives is suspended. Program services and levels of service will necessarily be reduced. Regional agencies in the Wayne's World Public Schools have been asked to participate in our budget solution by reducing requests or accommodating. Level funding. Some contributions to community agencies are recommended for reduction at my sole discretion. Our organization can be described as affordable and lean. But one that exceeds the core demand of municipal government with professional levels of service. Given that's our starting position, it simply was not, is not possible to meet the financial challenge of this. Magnitude without appreciable reduction to service and program. We're not glad to make these recommendations and some are in fact a departure from a strong tradition of vigorous fiscal stewardship and management. They are nevertheless justifiable and one time measures, but not ones that our organization should aspire to. Or can afford to repeat. It's important to note, I think, that the funds originally recommended to improve employee compensation. Addressing a known short company, shortcoming in our organization have been eliminated from the recommended budget. I recently heard an employee share that the separation and disruption resulting from the pandemic was particularly challenging. Because the individual missed their coworkers having come to regard them as family. It is remarkable and exceptional, in my view, that the work that directors do to establish such a culture. And environment and what coworkers share among one another. Would engender such favorable regard for one's workplace and one's coworkers. Unfortunately, some of the recommendations and action and subsequent actions. Will not feel very family like and they won't do much to support and sustain. The healthy culture that has that many have worked so hard to establish. I think it's worthy of emphasis as well that the recommendation to fund public schools, which were poised to realize one, if not the largest increases in funding. Positioning the schools and excuse me, the school board and the superintendent to make meaningful progress on their operational goals. Levelled. My recommended level funding, I imagine, is a disappointing outcome, but a better outcome than some departments and other agencies will enjoy. Agility has been a point of emphasis in our organization during the coronavirus experience. The ability to adapt mentally, emotionally, physically. To a rapidly changing environment, rapidly changing resources. Expectations or missions. Our staff have demonstrated remarkable agility in the last sixty days. And I would encourage the council to join us in adopting that commitment to agility as you consider and adopt this budget. If the economy improves and conditions warrant, we will recommend favorable amendment to the budget. Similarly, if conditions do not improve or even worsen, it may be necessary to consider. And adopt. More additional or difficult choices. We won't begin to understand or have an idea of where we are headed financially until probably the end of the first quarter. We should remain prepared and open to the need for swift response to changing economics. Or changing conditions of public health. Mr. Shaw will provide an overview of the revised recommended budget. The council is scheduled this evening to hold a public hearing. And consider introducing the annual appropriation ordinance. Council is also asked to hold a public hearing and consider introducing the ordinance establishing tax rates for the calendar year twenty twenty or the fiscal year twenty twenty one. There are no recommended increases to taxes. And as the mayor alluded to initially. You'll be asked to consider a resolution that confirms the current. Utility charges fees. For the next fiscal year as well. That I pass it along.
Thank you, Mr. Ham. Mr. Mayor, members of council, as Mr. Ham has said, I'll try to walk us through the revisions to. The FY twenty one budget as we're proposing them this evening. In early April, council received a presentation of the budget that we had. Originally conceived and even at that time, we indicated that there would have to be some dramatic amendments and revisions to the the budget. I think we're all aware that. What began as a public health crisis has evolved into an economic crisis and that this is affecting local governments. In the Commonwealth and really throughout the nation and are lots of articles in professional trade journals and even the general media about the impact. That the coronavirus shutdowns are having and will have on local governments. I read one estimate that across the nation that local governments. Are poised to lay off somewhere between three hundred thousand and maybe as many as a million employees nationwide. Hopefully, we'll all find that our estimates are overly conservative and that the economy will bounce back more quickly. Then that is perhaps projected in this budget. And as Mr. Hamp alludes to, I would say that there are certainly recommendations that we're making to you that we wouldn't make except for the extraordinary circumstance. I had hoped that I would never be a part of a budget team that had to recommend to a council that we would tap your revenue. Stabilization fund, for instance, and I think. One of the strategies that we've tried to develop though, and this recommendation. Would be ways that we could roll back or step back from the use of fund balance or the use of. Employee furloughs and those kinds of things if we find ourselves in a better position than we now predict. But as Mr. Ham alludes to, it's going to take some time to be able to determine that, that it'll probably certainly be the first quarter or maybe even closer to November. Or so that we get to see enough revenue trend to feel confident that we're either in a better or worse position. I would. Give as a word of caution that if we find ourselves in a similar position in, say, November, when we start to assemble budgets for fiscal year twenty twenty two. That we're going to have to do some things that will be. More are going to be different that. At that point, we wouldn't be able to replicate. The use of a revenue stabilization fund, for instance, and I think we would be looking to a more dramatic rethinking of how the municipal organization operates. As as I've said, we could find ourselves in a better or worse place and we certainly hope that our projections. Right now are overly conservative and this would be one time that I would be glad to be wrong. I think if we do find ourselves in that position, though, the one advantage will be that we will have more time to think through. But I would think that they're going to call for some more restructuring of municipal service and service delivery. I'd like to walk through a PowerPoint presentation if you. Bear with me. I came across this quote and. I think it's meant something to me. But what what I found in working with the department heads here at the city and certainly. Mr. McCormick and his staff in the finance department, Mr. Ham and employees generally and and you as council members is that. We have all the skills necessary to work our way through this problem that. The types of ingenuity and intellect and and that we've. We've. Currently possess, I believe, will prove enough to get us through to the other side. It's a little bit disheartening, I think, as we look at the priorities that the council established at its most recent retreat and the mirror priorities really that this council's had for a couple of years. I believe that they're the right things for this community and for the organization to focus on. And and I think we had presented a budget in early April. That made significant headway in accomplishing the goals established by the council. And unfortunately, the revisions to the budget. Will diminish to some extent, accomplish one of those goals. I do think, though, that the budget still will maintain the core and essential service delivery to the community that we will still. Be operating, you know, a good public safety operation. If you call nine one one, we're going to respond and respond rapidly. We'll deliver clean water and sanitation to the community. And we'll we'll continue to provide parks and open space. I think. Throughout the community, we will still be present and available to the citizens as as they've come to expect. I think we we typically think about the budget adoption in terms of the tax supported general fund. But I would note for the council, anybody that's watching this evening that the council actually adopts. A budget that is in excess of. Hundred and twelve million dollars and. Certainly, the the fifty million dollar general fund is a big portion of that, but we also. Adopt the school's entire budget, our contribution, state and federal contributions. Because the school is a subcomponent of the city in terms of finance and so the forty one million dollar school budget is included. That the debt service fund of three, more than three million dollars. Is adopted by the council, capital improvements fund, which is really a multi-year fund and represents the the ongoing capital projects such as. The reconstruction of Florence Avenue Bridge is adopted with the annual budget. We adopt a budget for the Office on Youth as we're their fiscal agent for that regional agency. And then the enterprise funds as a combined or account for more than fourteen million dollars of the city's budget. The budget that we originally proposed to council was. It just in excess of fifty three million dollars and that represented a two point six million dollar increase or an increase of just over one point three million dollars, almost one point four million dollars. As you well know, we've had to amend that budget and so the budget we now propose to council is a fifty million. Six hundred and forty four thousand, one hundred and seventy nine dollar budget. That represents a two percent increase over last year's budget or an increase of just over a million dollars. The budget actually. We had originally proposed at fifty three million dollars has. Has a revenue shortfall about four million dollars, but there is a fair amount of that that we make up through the use of. Deferred capital improvements, use of revenue stabilization and then reallocation of some of our. V dot urban maintenance money from paving to administrative overhead. As the COVID virus. Nineteen started to settle in, there were a number of economists who started to try to estimate what the impact on local government and specifically local governments here in Virginia. Would see and so the there was a fellow that works for Financial Analytics Group, John Reinbold that developed a. Model. There was a gentleman who's a professor at Old Dominion University, Ron Carley that developed a model and so we've. Adopted their models to make estimates here locally and we're estimating that we will lose from original. Revenue estimates about two point five percent in real property taxes, about five percent in personal property. About ten percent in local sales tax, twenty five percent of business and professional license fees and tax. Twenty five percent in lodging tax, transient occupancy, twenty five percent in meals and five percent of all other revenues. And as noted that the sum total of these reductions from the original revenue estimates is about four point two million dollars. Think that as we look at that kind of a shortfall. That is worth remembering where our revenue really comes from, that we receive about seventeen percent of our revenues. From the Commonwealth and most of that goes to supporting the urban maintenance program, which is our streets maintenance program. But also the support of constitutional offices. We receive support for the library and police department as well. But eighty three percent of our budget has to come from the local sources. The most prominent would be general properties tax, real estate tax, personal property machinery and tools comprised about forty five percent of the remaining budget. Thirty percent though comes from those more volatile revenues, the local sales tax, meals tax, various types of use taxes. Electric consumption and so forth and business professional licenses, those kinds of things. And so. If local business is affected, then we're affected significantly as well. Their receipts are down. Then our receipts are going to be down significantly because we have fair reliance on that kind of local business activity. As we then turn our attention to. Where do we go to start to find the expenditure cuts so that we can balance our budget without additional revenue? You see that, you know, some of our biggest expenditures are outside of the operating departments of the city. The biggest single expenditure that local governments typically make and certainly is the case for Waynesboro is support of the local school system. And we provide more than fifteen million dollars in the current budget to the local school system. We also have a significant debt expense of more than three million dollars. And then we transfer funds out to Department of Social Services and as I mentioned, Office on Youth. And other agencies. We support local regional jail, not juvenile detention center. But then we turn our attention perhaps to the internal operating departments of the city. And the larger departments tend to be public safety taken as a whole is about ten million dollars. Public Works is about a six million dollar budget, but. A great deal of that, in fact, the vast majority of that is represented by the urban maintenance program that's funded by the Commonwealth. And then smaller departments, as you see, are the support departments that exist for revenue administration, general administration, financial administration. Information technology is an internal service fund, human resources and smaller departments like planning. So if we're looking to reduce budgets, on the one hand, we have a priority to preserve public safety service. On the other hand, those are big budgets and it's a lot there perhaps is greater flexibility to find. Some the the kind of resources that we have to find. In a ten million dollar budget than it may be in the two hundred thousand dollar budget of the planning. As well as we turn our attention to trying to reduce expenditures, we're mindful that again, more than forty percent. Of the the revenues that are generated by the actions of the city council go to either debt service, the schools or an agency or organization. Outside of the municipal organization. And then of the remainder, about two thirds of the the resources that we spend are for wages and benefits and so. We realize that if we're going to make significant budget reductions, it's unfortunate, but we have to find a way of reducing labor cost. So the the way that we're proposing that the council can. Make the necessary reductions to match revenue. So we have a balanced budget are as follows. One. We're proposing the use of four hundred and thirty two thousand dollars of this council's revenue stabilization fund. We wouldn't suggest this unless we believe and the council should. As well, if you're to adopt the budget, believe that this is a one time catastrophic event, that this is. Not to be used in a year in, year out or periodic basis, just as a way of plugging hole in a budget. I think we have to believe that. We're in a unique situation. We're also recommending that we defer capital projects, that is reserves that we would otherwise transfer to a capital truck projects fund. The amount of one million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And again, I don't think we would recommend this unless we felt like we were in a one time and catastrophic situation. So this is an area, though, where the actual use of these funds will be finalized at the end of the next fiscal year. So it's a fund balance exercise. If we find that revenues are better and revenues exceed the expenditures of the city. Then we can buffer ourselves against some of the use of this fund balance. We had originally budgeted to provide city employees with a three percent merit opportunity raise and then as well. To complete the first two phases of our wage and compensation study. The amount that we had budgeted for those. Endeavors was three hundred and fifty four thousand dollars. We're recommending that that be eliminated from the budget. We would reduce street paving and equipment purchases in the amount of four hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars. And again, that's really basically a reallocation of V dot funds from paving and equipment to overhead allocation. We're allowed to do that within the urban maintenance program. We typically don't do that because we'd rather spend the money in paving. We've asked the department heads to provide budget cuts from their various departments and we've received nine hundred and fifty one thousand dollars of department cuts and that includes. In some cases, both wage or position cuts where we've had, we'll hold some positions vacant. As they exist today and material and other purchase types of reductions. I would note that this was not an easy thing to accomplish because I think. If you're well aware that we enjoy one of the lower tax rates in the Commonwealth of Virginia. I believe we've tried to be a very affordable community to live in in that regard. Which means we run with fairly lean budgets and as well, especially this year, I think department heads made a real effort to tighten their budgets. Because we felt like we wanted to devote more resource to wages and compensation and unfortunately. That hasn't worked out and we've had to go back and make additional cuts. We've built in six furlough days for all employees in the general fund. With the exception of public safety employees and any employee who makes less than fifteen dollars an hour. And then we've talked to the school superintendent. And come to agreement that we will level fund the school system. That is, we would provide them the same revenue that they're receiving in the current fiscal year. I would note that at four hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars that that reduction still leaves the schools with. that that reduction still leaves the schools with a higher level of revenue than they would have otherwise received in the current FY20 budget as proposed under the revenue sharing agreement that we have. And then just a bit more detail in some of the, where some of the the cuts have come from. As we mentioned, the school funding and the pavement, both of which I think we would hope to restore as economic, the economic climate perhaps improves. But in the departmental cuts, there are more than $400,000 worth of cuts in the public safety departments, more than $400,000 of cuts in parks, recreation, library, about $163,000 worth of cuts in community development departments, planning, economic development, $140,000 worth of cuts from the public works department. That is the the general fund supported public works operations, which are the engineering department and the administration of the public works departments. The six furlough days, as I've mentioned, about $100,000 cuts from governmental, general governmental services. We went back to all of our regional partners and asked for to revisit the budgets that had been proposed to the city, and those regional agencies have provided $58,000 worth of cuts. And then the judicial or court system is reduced by about $5,000. As the mayor mentioned early in the meeting, the budget that we're proposing this evening does not include rate increases for water, sewer, stormwater utilities, or monthly refuse collection. Nonetheless, the council should confirm the rates as they currently exist. That concludes my comments. I'm certainly glad to answer any questions that the council have at this time. We have prepared a budget ordinance for your consideration that can be introduced this evening, following the public hearing.
Any questions?
Mr. Shaw, just have one. When you were talking about the forecast of revenues being down, you said 2.5 loss in real estate and 5% in personal property. How do they figure that? Are we losing people, giving up houses and stuff? How does that come about?
A lot of it would, or at least some some significant portion is probably projected on the basis of an increasing level of uncollected taxes or delinquency. And then as well, personal property grows as people purchase new vehicles and and motorcycles, boats, those kinds of things. So I think there's a, it's twofold. One would be an increasing uncollectible or uncollected delinquency in the current year, and the other is just a reduction in value.
Okay, but those are just estimates by somebody doing estimates, right?
That's correct. That's correct. And I, you know, to be very clear that as we started to approach how to amend budgets, other local governments in Virginia were going through, you know, the the same situation. And so a lot of finance directors were coming together on Zoom meetings just like this one. And so there were several economists that stepped forward and started to try to develop models for local governments. But at this point, I think these are estimates, perhaps too conservative, perhaps not conservative enough. Time will tell.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaw, I had a question about the the school funding. The number you included, the 458,000, was the increase they would not be getting. Give us, give us numbers of what they were given previously, because then you said something about a a different increase. I missed that part.
Okay, so the schools would have otherwise received more than $700,000 in additional revenue. Now, part of that was revenue that they should have received in FY20 and that we provided to them by special appropriation. You may recall that there was a recalibration of tax proceeds from a previous year. So the $498,000 was the real increase based on the revenues fiscal year 2019. As I think the council's where we we base the the next year's budget on the most recent Conference of Annual Financial Reports stated revenues. So you're really looking to FY21 to to state but your revenues for schools on FY19 revenues. That would have given the schools an additional 410, was it 98 or 78,000? That, that's the reduction that's being made so that they are level funded according to what they are receiving in fiscal year 20. If we were to look at fiscal year 21 and calculate 32 and a half percent of the discretionary revenues, which is the the formula, then it wouldn't receive as much as they are receiving. But as you, as I say, that's if we were estimating in real time. So our hope is that what we would do is over a period of several years, keep track of that lost revenue and somehow, you know, make make good with the schools. And so we're really trying to think about it in terms of what they would have been based on FY19 revenue and FY20 revenue and FY21 revenue.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Just, just for clarification, I know we've said that in terms of the furloughs. You speak a little bit to the the reduction in public safety expenditures that you identified, I think, on the second slide.
Yes. Some of that is in, well, it's spread across all of the public safety divisions. The fire department, the EOC and police department, the biggest share coming from the police department. Some of that is vacant, will be vacancy savings that there are either, we know that there's going to be some vacancies in the police department, and we will hold positions until the police academy that starts hopefully in January of 2021. And then as well, the, all of the divisions offered up materials that they would have otherwise purchased, whether it's, you know, technology, there's quite a bit of technology now that goes into all of those divisions. You know, some things that are software related, technology related, and just materials in general. Then ultimately, the, of course, you, you and the public at large receive, you know, a line item budget that, you know, will detail all of of the reductions. And hopefully we'll have that prepared with, you know, as we adopt the budget. Typically, we, we put that online as the budget is adopted.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? All right, well, we have a this will be a public hearing. Well, everybody ready? Hereby open the public hearing. Do we have any callers?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if you want to provide the phone number, again, we do have at least one public comment that we'll read that came to us by email. But as of yet, I don't think we have anybody on the line.
Sure, I can read that number again. 844-844-9200. And then prompted, you'll enter the access code for the meeting, which is 38145. Again, that's 398145. And you hit the pound button at the end of that. And then you'll hear a Q and A started and you hit star six in order to to be logged. And so with that, I guess we'll go with the written comment that we've received and go ahead and read that out.
Yes, sir. This comment comes from, pardon me, this comment comes from Mr. DeBeau's Eccleston Jr., 564 Oak Avenue, Waynesboro, Virginia. Good evening, everyone. I would like to suggest that the stormwater fee increase be extended to four years instead of the now proposed two years. My next suggestion is for all 17 department heads to have a reduction in salary of 5% or 1,000 to $2,000. This would be a moral booster for the rank and file employees, knowing that the supervisors have collectively sacrificed in this time of need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Eccleston. Give a couple more seconds.
We still have no callers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, with that, give it another 10 seconds or so. Make sure to read it out a couple times. Okay, well, with that, I will hereby close the public hearing. And is there a motion to introduce the ordinance that's been prepared tonight to reflect the conversation that we've had this evening?
So moved.
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Great, thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the ordinance will be considered at our May 14th meeting, which we'll chat about here shortly. Number six is to hold a public and consider introducing an ordinance and taxes for the calendar year 2020 on property and persons for the payment of interest on the city debt, support of city government, for the maintenance of the public schools, and for other expenses providing for the assessment of persons and property for the collection of taxes, revenues, assessments, and imposing penalties for the failure to comply with the provisions here. Mr. Hamm.
Yes, sir, Mayor Short, members of council, the city manager's fiscal year 2021 recommended budget is constructed on various tax rates. Annually, the council must adopt the personal property, machinery and tools, and real estate tax rates. Rates were 90 cents for real estate tax, 325 personal property tax, and 325 machinery and tools. These rates remain unchanged for the calendar year 2020 tax rates.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Hamm? Hearing none, I will hereby open the public hearing.
No callers, Mr. Mayor.
And no written comments.
Okay, we'll just give it another 10 seconds or so, in case folks are. All right. Well, I will hereby close the public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance? Genie, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion? Great, the, this ordinance will also be presented and are considered for, at our May 14th meeting. Item seven is to consider adopting a resolution maintaining the fiscal year 2020 utility charges, fees and rates for fiscal year 2021. Mr. Hamm. You're muted, Mike.
He's muted.
Now you're back. Yes, I apologize that I don't think any additional introductory or comment is required. These, the resolution simply confirms the current rates for the ensuing fiscal year.
Questions, Mr. Hamm? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution maintaining the current utilities in, or FY21?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Is this one, are we calling for the motion this evening, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, so this one we can, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Motion carries. I got in kind of a groove there, you know. All right, great. Item eight is to consider adopting an ordinance for giving penalties, fees, and interest on unpaid utility payments for the period ending June 30th, 2020. Mr. Allen.
Yes, sir. Mayor Short and members of council, it came to our attention that similarly styled objectives of the council to afford some relief to taxpayers and our utility customers that to accomplish in a similar manner that we provided for a delinquent meals tax. This would forgive, I'm sorry, let me state this more accurately. That's the penalty and rate of interest at zero for unpaid utility bills during this COVID period.
Any, any questions, Mr. Hamm? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Genie. All those in, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number nine is to consider a motion to postpone the May 11th. I gave a sneak preview of that in a previous bullet item. Consider a motion to postpone the May 11th, 2020 regular business meeting and to reschedule it to a court on Thursday, May 14th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. The reason for that is to allow the advertising window to sort of make its way through a seven-day required advertising period. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bobby. Any discussion? The motion carries. Thank you. It brings us to number 10 on the agenda, which is public citizen comment period. Do we have anybody?
None.
They're checking. I mean, just checking.
Don't currently have anyone on the line.
Okay, well, with that, we will move to number 11, which is the adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. And and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
You there? Do we have a sense of how many folks tuned in to our meeting?
If, if you can give us just a second, I can probably find that out.